Does it feel too bad in here tonight? This is much better this week than last time. All right, looking to adopt the agenda. Any changes to the agenda? I know Lindsey has said that the 425.1 is going to be tabled.
Correct.
Because it needs the EM to do the first reading. And then 902, 902.
Addendum.
Addendum and 905.5.
We'll do those in September.
Okay, any other changes?
January.
January?
Probably again in January.
Yeah. Any other changes?
No.
Or a motion to approve the agenda?
Some of.
Some of. Second.
By Lindsey and seconded by Scott. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. No public comments? Moving on to the activities report, 6.1. You have props.
He has show and tell.
Yeah, he's got props tonight here.
I don't know if you want to, so at our, I'll just hold them up here. At our last activity council meeting, we had it on August 7th. We set dates to come around. Nikki Kane kept minutes, so we will be dialed in shortly as far as the total transparency piece. We'll have it on the website. Once I figure it out, the new format, it's got to be in a certain way or heaven forbid. So, but we'll get that up and running so that anyone can see kind of agenda items and things like that. One of them was the signage on the football field and then in the gym. So for the football field, just on the main gate with the players, we had Super Frog just come up with event personnel only. Visitors, so they know once they come through the gate to get out of our way and go into their own spot. And then just the admission gate, so they know right away where to go, so we don't have to kind of fight the traffic. We'll see how long these things last. We'll put them up with zip ties. And then for the gym, with the middle school section, what we'll do is the velcro basically, so we could move them. But we've got a couple for the home, the student section, the band, and then the visitors. So we can kind of keep things separated, just a little bit more organization on that piece. Relatively cheap way to, we'll see. If we need to change them, we can change them. So in the next couple of days, I'll have those up. Numbers for cross-country are up. We are at about 20, so we've got a full varsity and a JV squad. Middle school squad for the cross-country on the boys' side, and then a full varsity for the girls. Mary Wilson just agreed to take the middle school job for the cross-country coach. So we now have that filled, which is awesome to have her working with our young runners. And then Mike can just focus on with the varsity team. So that was just done today. Volleyball's sitting at about 53 with their four teams. And football at about 72. And considering they're about 55, 10 through 12, and only 10 seniors, so that's pretty good. We've got some younger classes coming up. Let's see. Talk with the coaches on the team and the individual banners. Every coach has the information if they want to do it. In-season, the parameters of a 6x8 to go between, or a 2x3 for the individual. So that will be up to, they all have their opportunities. So you'll see some that really don't, don't really care. And you'll see some that'll be the first ones to put it up there. So that's going to be, I don't think our football coach, you know, I brought it to his attention. And he said that costs as much as a football helmet. He'd rather have a new football helmet than a banner, but we'll talk him into it, I'm sure. We'll have something up there. Things on my radar, the MDE report we'll be doing October for the activities. I'll probably get that knocked out a little bit before that, I think. Now that the end of the year, the audit is in, I'll have the final numbers, so I can do that report. Basketball coaches, you know, you don't ever want to riff your own programs, but talk with the coaches. When I come to the board and I ask for extra coaches, just we're on the same page, it's because I truly need. We've got the need for the, we've got the interest and the kids are coming out. Numbers are going down a little bit. And because they went down, we, I decided it's kind of, we're going to eliminate the assistant coach positions in girls' and boys' basketball. The ones that were just dedicated as assistants, not the B-team or whatever. Because the whole point was if our numbers were high, you allowed me to add it. Now they've kind of dropped back, so we can handle it. If for some chance that numbers jump back up, I'd probably come before you and ask if we can add them again. But right now, cost-effective wise, we really don't have the numbers to justify it. I talked with both head coaches and I talked with both assistant coaches this morning to let them know that that's the direction that we're going to go. And we'll see. We're starting to see across the board a lot more specialization in sports. There's only going to be one sport athletes, which is very disappointing. So we're starting to see a little bit less in, in boys' side is usually pretty strong. Basketball girls, it never really is, but it's kind of all right on the one-sport athletes. So we'll still try to encourage you to get more, but that was the reason why. So if you hear anyone, it's just we've got to be able to justify it. And once those numbers jump back up, I'll come before you and ask to add them back. But right now, we're okay with it. And the last thing, working on with our home events coming up, kind of some event staff attire. Looking at, all right, what can we do to kind of single ourselves out as far as at-home volleyball games or things like that? So I don't know if I, I'm ready to go blaze orange and come barely through there. But if we have something that looks kind of cool, and maybe DGF staff or something, and to kind of signal out our workers, we'll go with it. I don't have anything to model for you yet, but if I do, I'll give it the next board meeting if I come up with something, something good. Other than that, we're off to a pretty good start. Events start next week. We go to DL and make the first ones for images this weekend, so football. So it's, it's here.
Could you go like with a lanyard, like an event worker lanyard?
That would be a very easy way, yes.
Right?
I'd like to do that. Axol.
And then if it changes, then it changes. Just a lanyard and then you can have them.
Just a lanyard that it stands out and then.
Yeah, and they can be in the, they could.
Event supervisor, whatever.
Yeah.
You could probably even have some extras for people behind the concession stand if they have a question. Tracy, you could probably get a stick 'em thing, with those 3M things.
But you're going to have the blaze orange vest.
Yeah, you're going to have a blaze orange vest, yes.
Well, I don't know if I need it, they always seem to find me to complain about it.
All right.
Anything else?
Nope.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. All right, Tracy, 6.2.
I was kind of looking at the board schedule, and it kind of said focusing on summer rec right now. So we'll come back again, I think we come back in October, we'll kind of go over really where our financial, I think I had a couple there. Our financial numbers came in for the year for summer rec, because some of our invoices and all of that have not totally been finalized yet. So I'll try to make this brief, but I did want to add in some numbers here for you. So you somewhat saw participation and kind of how summer rec went for this summer. Overall, what we've tried to do the last several years is put everything we possibly can on the web. So if people want to register, see schedules or anything like that, we put them out there. So if they have questions, they have a point to reference. Couple things to note for summer rec. One of the big things for us is transportation. Every single year, we try to look at what can we do different or better to keep, always continue to keep the costs down. What makes up our transportation for summer rec truly is the shuttles that go from Dilworth to Glendon and Glendon to Dilworth. We also have the Felton shuttle that will go up there. And what we do with that is we look at the special ed transportation availability and where they have breaks in their schedule. And we kind of use the transportation staff, special ed staff, when they're hauling summer students back and forth during those breaks. We can't necessarily look at where all of the needs are and try to, you know, plan it out that way. We really look at what our availability is, so we can kind of minimize the costs. We also have the trips. Trips are truly the going to Holly for a game and coming back. One of the things we did different this year was before this summer started, we played for soccer mini-kickers. Pelican Rapids and Holly and DGA, that's it. Pelican Rapids will never travel anywhere for a game. We only can go there, so when you're driving there each week, it adds up. So what we opted to do this summer to keep costs down was to have all of our games at night. And we actually, to avoid having to buy additional soccer nets, because we don't offer soccer. Holly has the facilities and the equipment to do it. So they agreed to host our games and we had parents transport. Games were every Thursdays in Holly from 6:00 to 7:30. So it, you know, eliminated the busing there for our soccer, so that helps out as well. In order to keep costs low, we try to schedule all of the summer rec activities in Dilworth or Glendon, so that grade levels don't really have to choose this activity over another. We also try to have, if we have a third and fourth grade program going on, we'll look at what fifth and sixth grade program can be going on at the, say, an opposite site, so that they go back and forth and we save. You know, so trying to overall tying a lot of our travel. Out-of-town children, you know, we're analyzing all of the program surveys that have come in right now. And, you know, some of the questions are, you know, do you offer transportation for out-of-town students? That would be difficult. That would be like opening up the summer, the school year and going out picking up kids. So if you get some of those questions, it's how come we don't pick up at, you know, so-and-so's house for summer rec? We just can't. We just say it's got to go from site to site to keep our costs down. Eileen has not finished. We started the new fiscal year July 1st, and it'll go till June of next year. But so far, like when we compare June from this year to June of last year, our expenses for June this year are 11% down in costs compared to last year. One thing we'll look at next year is we'll probably take, and we'll have more discussion at the advisory council level, is our theater camp is offered in August. We might shuffle it and offer it in July, maybe the end of the day, you know, like we do now. And see if it can work so that it doesn't have to have a girls' basketball or boys' basketball camp. Participants have to choose theater over basketball. So we're going to really keep that in mind, because if we can do that, we would eliminate some of the expenses in August for transportation. So transportation, we're really looking at expenses just to continue to keep it, keep it down. Instructors and coaches, overall, just looking at the surveys, and like I say, we'll share those with our advisory in August or in October, is good compliments of our coaches. Some of the things, you know, they really like the T-ball coach pitch change, moving them to the same nights. So parents now have two nights really free if they have a kindergarten or a second grader. Some of the things they offered and some of the feedback was, we do have a lot of coaches, coaching, ponytail, and Little League. Some of the feedback we got was, you know, monitor the phone use for the teenagers that are sitting on the bench, you know, when the kids are out on the field. We continually do that. We'll go to games and say, okay, Jimmy, put the phone away. You know, I mean, before a tournament even happens, we will send reminders to coaches, no phones, make sure every kid is signed out. And we'll check the rosters when the games are over to make sure every kid's counting. So lots and lots of things that we're evaluating right now. And again, the costs and expenses, when I get down to the classes and programs, I'll highlight a couple of things on those as well. But we continue to look at how can we improve and do better. Pictures, this year we changed things up a little bit. Last year, some of the feedback we had was, we wish you offered a shuttle for our students to go to pictures. Some of us work till 6 o'clock, can you offer a shuttle? We did offer a shuttle and we had three riders. So did we, you know, was the time not the best? Things, I mean, we're going to look at that again. Maybe it's something that we go, have to go back to just evening pictures, and maybe it's two nights a week again and try to condense it a little bit. But that was some of the feedback, you know, for pictures. Classes and programs, if you look down below, you will overall see the numbers for each participant, for each program, I should say. And, you know, obviously right off the top, T-ball and coach pitch, it's a good number of participants. That is a volunteer coach program. So when you take that, and I always say it's probably like 225, 230 kids, take that times the amount, that is almost mostly true profit for the summer rec program. Other than that, we have to pay for shirts. So if another program should ever deficit spend, we kind of look at that. We truly try to run every program, so that when we set the fee and we look at the projected participation, we know that we're on target. One of the, I mean, Little League, that one this year, you kind of had those numbers. When people went on vacation, you were short some players, so you'd have to pull from team to team. So each year, we continue to look at how we create the teams. One conversation that, you know, we will have at the October meeting with our advisory is, we're going to have a conversation about 14U and 18U, just like we did when Joe had Babe Ruth a few years ago. It depends on the number of participants you have. We went up in fees from 60 to 100 per participant. But when you look at the 14U participants, you take that times 100, that's going to be $1,400. The coaches are at tournaments that are eight hours a day. It's cheaper for us to pay them a set rate than to pay them for 65 hours worth of going to these tournaments and games and things like that, that they self-transport for. But some of those 14 players do move up and play on 18U. So we'll probably have a conversation with the softball club, DGF softball club, and say, how can we balance this out a little bit? Because that one, I project, we could be deficit spending probably $500 to $700 this year, just because four, you know, four players, you know, didn't come out this year. So we're continuing to monitor that. But as you go down and you look through these numbers, a couple of them have a zero. It's because the registrations came in and we had two people. So we opted to cancel instead of, instead of have it. The art classes and the canvas painting that you see, I think the canvas painting might be on the bag. We have five classes, that's where this number 63 comes up. Some of the classes we taught in-house. Nikki taught it or I taught it, so that we did not have to hire somebody, because, you know, designer apron. That truly was, we buy the supplies. Our wages, you know, in the community ed, Brian has that designated in there. So we tried to keep the class, so that we only had to pay for supplies. You know, and you keep going down and you'll just see where we are on participation and numbers. Overall, you know, 1,600, 1,650 kids participated in activities. So it was a, it was a good summer and it was busy. Program surveys, we will share that with the advisory council when we meet with them in October and let them look at that, say, it's fresh in our mind. What did you hear? You know, some people might not fill out a survey. What did you hear? What is something that you can report back on? We, I mean, I, overall, I think, you know, the weather was cooperative this summer. It went, you know, really well. But sometimes people don't fill out surveys. So if there's anything that you hear, think, boy, Tracy, Nikki, this is kind of the word on the street on this, let us know. Because we got to take that into consideration when we plan for next year. I won't go into too much depth on two, but we obviously know next year we'll probably get the Glendon Park Avenue project. We have to be mindful on our end when we plan activities, so that those kids on the way south end can get to activities. Will it mean we might have more played in Dilworth? We could. But we will just have to look at where we are. And we will definitely make a note in our brochure saying, you know, if that project goes forward, which it sounds like there's a good chance it will, parents will just have to be mindful that we'll do our best to, you know, transportation and getting the kids back and forth. It might be more pickups on the south end and so forth. I mentioned a little bit about number two, bullet point number two, mid to end of July activities. We're going to be mindful of theater camp and get that into July, so that we can save a little bit of costs for the transportation piece. Overall, I think, you know, when we look at the last three years, benchmarking ourselves, and I'll share that when I do the final summer rec financial report once the audit is all, Cindy shared those final numbers with me. I think you're going to see a trend where transportation, we've increased programming, but our transportation has gone down when it comes to summer rec shuttles and trips. So overall, I mean, I think it's gone well. Just a heads up, community ed state fry, we've already got that planned for next year. Post-prom committee is kicking off their meeting tomorrow night here in the media center for junior parents and a couple of our seniors who were on there last year. 905.5, if you don't, you don't talk about it tonight. When you do, just a heads up, I shared with Brian that attachment that we've done the last few years on our reconciliation. And how we do it, and we've done it for a while. And our, we already scheduled our advisory council meetings for this school year, so that those are online and on the web, so that you have those. And the last thing, I shared with our advisory council today, a new link or URL for the Rebel store. I know that this site has tons and tons and tons of stuff. I'm actually just getting emails back from our advisory council and responding those today as they come in. But the website, we've always had, the last couple of years, had an online store. But what happens is they process the orders, they leave it open for three, four weeks, they process the orders, and they close it down for a day or two, and then they reopen it. The new site is open all the time, and you can get your products within six days if you so choose. They process them all in three to five business days. And if you wanted it overnighted to Texas, you could. But they have everything on there, from blankets to keychains to water bottles to duffel bags to hats. They have Football Mom, they have everything. And everything, if you hover over it, it will be clicked to customize. So when I looked at it for the first time, the logo on the front is our logo, but some of it said 2019. You can customize and take the 19 off, not have anything on there. So I think it, I think a lot of people will like it, I think it's fun. The goal, one of our advisory council members asked today, is this website taking away from any of the fundraisers for like football or baseball or basketball or whatever? That's not the intent behind the Rebel store. The online store is really to keep it open all year long. And I know I asked Brian this, last year, I actually had to look it up. The like Dilworth PTA had asked, can you shut down the Rebel store when we have our fundraiser? It would be hard to do that, to shut it down and reopen for every fundraiser we have. We're not intending to take away from anything. It's just giving grandmas and grandpas and everybody else the opportunity to order something. A lot of the, I suppose, the fundraisers that are done are more athlete-participant driven. And I know as parents, we order stuff too, but that's not the intent on the online store. So. Any questions for us?
I'm a parent with kids in community ed, I thought the communication was a lot better and more cohesive this time around. So I appreciate that, thank you.
Good.
State fry, is it going to be a Friday night or a Saturday night?
It's going to be a Friday night outside of Lent.
Okay.
And Nikki said, oh, boy, we ended it at 11 instead as well, because from 11 to 12, we probably had about six crazy adults. So we thought we'll move it up an hour. Anything else, just let us know.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to 6.3, board committee reports.
We had policy this evening. We have several that are going to be for a second reading this evening. We have 425 staff development. We are tabling 425.1, that's staff development procedures. 509.1, out-of-state tuition is a second reading. Then we're going to go into 509 enrollment of non-resident students is a second reading. 509.2, the open enrollment lottery process. This is now going to be changing to a ratio system, which Brian is going to go over once we get into 9.1. This is a policy, so everybody knows, we review this annually and we can make adjustments as necessary as spaces issue for our district. So this is one we'll be looking at annually. Then we have 540 homeless policy and 725 severe weather-related school. We are going to table 902 and 905. Brian's getting those from Tracy. We'll review those and get those done in September.
All right, anything else? All right, moving on to 6.4.
Keep it to five minutes. How's that?
All right.
I'm even looking, so, since we just met last week, anyway. Everything operations-wise is continuing to move forward. As I said last week, it's been a, it's been a great summer for getting a lot of work done. If you haven't taken a look at whether it be the halls down in the elementary at this site with all of the cabinets, everything that was put in, they look outstanding. Dilworth site, we have, the middle school bathroom is, it is an absolute, such a change to be able to see that, that project being completed. And that's right at, they should have that done, I believe, probably mid-week, this week completely. All the floor tile, everything's in. They're putting back all the partitions. All of that will be in place, so they can get the waxing done later this week. We are doing, I put in an email to all of you, we're doing a staff lunch for all of our district-wide employees that work year-round this Thursday at noon. So anybody that can make it to that, it's noon to 1:00. That will be over in the media center at the Dilworth site. We had the luncheon earlier in the summer, about a month ago maybe, over at this site, so now we'll wrap it up over there. But just a nice culmination of a lot of work that people have been putting in. It looks, it just looks great. You look at the entrance over Dilworth and the door number one and coming in there, and you can just see a stark change with it. So that went well. A few things are coming up over the next month or so. You've probably received information about the Phase 3 and Phase 4 training. That is coming up September 14th and 15th, I believe. It's a Friday, Saturday. I think it would be a great opportunity if a few of us want to go to that. We can talk about it afterwards tonight. It's in Maple Grove, so again, it's a full-day Friday, full-day Saturday. So we got to get down there Thursday night. But that's really, you know, the Phase 3 specifically, Phase 3 is all about, and I'll pass this one around if you haven't seen it. But Phase 3 is, some of the things that we've already done in work sessions were some of the Phase 3. So it's talking about building board development in Phase 3. Phase 4, if you haven't been to that before, Phase 4 is more about community vision and how do you, how do you have good, open, transparent communication with your community? So again, it's a Friday, Saturday. I'm more than willing to go to that. I think it would be, as we're trying to do our planning, referendum and bond and bringing everything together, mission vision and such, it would be a nice opportunity. So that's coming up. There's a, all of our principals are going to, we're trying to get things aligned for the professional development, for our full admin cabinet. There are school law conferences, and we haven't been routinely going to these. And they're in Menolman, so we're going to do, we've got an opportunity to be able to get all of our principals going to these, they're one-day ones. So they're going to be hitting that in October. The superintendent one with our attorneys is coming up at the end of September. It's a one-day one, and it's very packed with a lot of important topics, so I'll be planning on hitting that. The Phase 1 and 2 trainings, of course, are later in, in November after the elections. Two pieces that, two things that we've got to talk about in September, of course, we're planning on hitting those contracts for the admin team, for the cabinet. The other thing, we've had the request from our transportation vendors. So. The other thing, we've had the requests from our transportation vendors, so we've gotta look at getting some meetings set up between now and, so that you, you're aware, and I CC'd Sandy when I communicated with one of the vendors, that, you know, we gotta get school going right now. We had the audit last week, we don't have any preliminary numbers. There won't be anything, there'll be public numbers by the end of the week, but they are gonna share with me some of the data that they're, some of the trend that they're seeing. It doesn't make any sense to me to be looking at vendor contracts and what else until we know where the audit, have an idea with that. So, that's all coming over the next weeks. The plan with the audit is that they would be here the first meeting in October to present. Okay? That way we can start getting some of the meetings with the vendors in September, and we know that we'll have the final data. We'll have preliminary data in mid-September from the auditors that we can talk about at a, at a board meeting, and then we'll have their presentation at that first October meeting. So you're, speed on all the capital items, the parking lot, we talked about that last week, you know, there's a lot of work going on. There's still some work over at the Dilworth site to make sure that they get that drainage set up so that we've, those downspouts, that's a project that needs to be done, we don't have that ice every winter, that, and that walkway, as people walk to the east out of door number one, that'll take care of that. So, important things for safety wise. And then this week, I'll be working on seeing if we can lock in preliminary proposal for the, looking at for the grant with MDE. Again, it's a ballpark number, you know, if we meet the specs, they'll say, yeah, go ahead, now you can start planning. I'd love to hear that, you know, it's remote in the first place.
Is this the school safety you're talking about?
This is a school safety one for twenty-five million, and, and again, it's, it's probably more politi, it's going to be utilized more so probably for the legislative session the next one, so they can show, here's the amount of schools that actually submitted, look at the fact that we need like ninety million dollars, and we only had twenty-five, and so it needs to be a higher priority in the next legislative session. So they'll use it for data for that. And I think everybody's, knows that's coming.